Please stand for a moment in prayer.
Father Lord, thank you so much for the beautiful day you've given us and for help and safety and just so many blessings, Lord, that you bless us with. We're thankful for this time together and, Lord, we pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding and guidance. Lord, just help us to make wise decisions for our town and our community and our citizens and, Lord, we are thankful for the many good things you do for us. Lord, there are those in our community that are hurting for various reasons and we pray, God, that you touch them in a special way. These things will ask me your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I wanted to start off by giving a quick overview of our 2015 physical year audit. Now, I do believe I have some very positive news to share with everyone. The first thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is whether we have a deficit or a surplus at the ending of the year. And I'm very proud to report today that the 2015 City of Rainsville had a budgetary surplus of $161,547 ending this year. There are some really good highlights to talk about in this. One of the things that I think's a great asset to this city is how our revenues have grown even above what we originally budgeted. We originally budgeted $3,847,000 in revenues and this year, that revenue stream went over $4 million. It ended up with $4,081,000. So, there was an increase of $166,000 above and beyond what we projected. At the end of the physical year, September 30th, 2015, we have some special revenue bonds and the balance of them are all healthy. We have a four and five cent state gas tax. At that point in time, it was right at $30,000. Our seven cent state gas tax fund came in a little bit over $48,000. The capital improvements funds at that point in time was barely under $150,000 sitting in the bank. We have a correctional facilities fund. I assume that would be to build a larger jail if we need, I'm not sure what we use it for, but it has $28,000 sitting in. Our fire truck and equipment fund, which is a portion of the rental tax, had over $86,000 sitting in that. And the three mill fire tax fund had almost $15,000 sitting in. So, the fire department is sitting basically, at that point in time, over $100,000 in their fund. Now, there is a fire department special grant fund. It also had over $9,000 in. And the tornado memorial fund, at that point in time, had right at $21,000 in. A total for all of the special fund balances was $386,948. The assessed value of the city itself, that's all the municipal properties, $47,661,000. When we took over in 2012, the assessed value was $43 million. There has been almost a 10% increase in value of Rainsville. Our sales tax, we saw an increase in our sales tax of $119,000 over 2014. One of the things I think is a true driver of the sales tax is this facility that we currently reside in right now. The North Alabama Agribusiness Center does a fabulous job of bringing people from outside of Rainsville into Rainsville and while they're here, they buy gas, they buy Doritos, they buy McDonald's, whatever it is, they spend money and they bring it from outside to inside. To give y'all a true idea of the economic impact that this facility has had on the municipality of Rainsville, since the day this location has opened, when it opened in 2010, we ended the physical year 2010 with a sales tax volume of $2,135,000. We ended 2015 at $2,823,000. That is a net increase over that time period of 32.2% increase in sales tax revenue. It can't be attributed solely to the AgriCenter, but this AgriCenter has played a huge portion in that and so if you have a chance and you see Mike Sweat, tell him thank you for the good job that he's doing. I spoke with him on the way in here today and he let me know of the next 52 weeks that this facility is leased for 50 events and we, at this point in time, he don't know if we have an open weekend during that period. So, it is gaining ground and as of last week, the AgriCenter board met with a special consultant on revamping some fee structures, which would essentially, basically almost double the operating revenue that this thing produces, at the same time attracting in more events. So, there's a lot of positive things going on here and if you do see him, pat him on the back and tell him, "Add a boy because he deserves it and he's done a good job for the City of Rainsville." Our sanitation fees, we've even seen an uptick, increase in the amount of revenue derived from that. In 2014, we had $593,000 collected for sanitation fees. In 2015, that increased to $620,000. There's a total increase of $26,855 just in sanitation receipts. Now, I'd like to attribute that to two individuals. Mr. Ricky Dawkins has done an excellent job with the sanitation and I'd like to thank Mr. Freeman down there. He was very instrumental in bringing in a new revenue stream in the roll-off dumpsters. That has paid dividends. Just in the last year, we have seen an increase in four and a half percent. Our ad valorem tax has increased. In 2015, we had $256,000 in ad valorem tax. In 2014, it was a little over $244,000. There was an increase in the ad valorem tax of $11,207. That's a net increase of 4.6%. Now, with the good news, there is a little bad news, that we have had some things that we have had some decreased revenue in and it seems as though as cars get more energy efficient, gas efficient, gets better miles per gallon, people driving Priuses, our gasoline tax, which is basically per gallons, has dropped a little bit. In 2014, we had $91,950, or 2014. In 2015, that did drop to $88,716. There was a net decrease of $3,234 or a net decrease of 3.5%. That right there pretty well sums up a good overall view of where we are financially with our 2015 audits. So, I think we all at this table, every single one of us can say we're definitely proud and every single one sitting here had a part to play in these good numbers. So, to each and every one of you, I sincerely say thank you. I have provided a overview, a printout to all the media and I have some extra ones so if you didn't get one and you need these numbers, please let me know, I'll have them available. Now, I do have a few other items on my agenda tonight and one of them is safety coordinator. I had the opportunity of speaking with our new police chief today and the discussion involved around, hey, the existing chief, or the prior chief, functioned as the safety coordinator and here's the reason that we have a safety coordinator position. It allows the city to take a substantial discount on its workman's comp insurance through ANIC and periodically, ANIC will check in and want to talk to the safety coordinator. And so, since Charles Chief Centers has retired and Chief Stewart has taken over, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same boat and speaking with the chief, he said he'd be more than happy to take over those responsibilities. That pretty well sums that. And essentially, the safety coordinator position is something, is a mechanism for us to get a discount on our workman's comp insurance. I've got two items from the wastewater treatment plant that we need to, that I'll need to bring up for a vote tonight. One is from Jim House and Associates. This was the changing out the rotator assembly at the pump instead, or the wastewater treatment plant. We have an invoice right here for $12,042 and $85 and there still is probably outstanding about $2,500 left outstanding on this bill. I'm going to ask tonight that we empower the general fund to pay it somewhere in the neighborhood of $14,600 to Jim House and Associates for work done and future work to be done at the wastewater treatment plant. The second item is from V.I.S. Incorporated. It is to, for cleaning the influent wet well at the headworks. It takes a super duper vacuum truck. They have a vacuum truck that has a 10,000 PSI hydro blaster. It says a 27-inch high-grade industrial vacuum truck that will come in and suck everything out of it. I will not go into details, just watch them there, but it will clean it out. The estimated cost of doing this is $6,610. As far as maintenance-wise goes, this is something that needs to be done about every two to three years. We're a little behind with that schedule. We have not had this right here done during our administration. So, this is something that happens, should happen once or twice during an administrative cycle. And so, I'll be asking us to authorize payment up to $6,610 to V.I.S. Incorporated for the cleaning of the influent wet wells at the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant. The last thing I have on my agenda, and this is where I'm going to ask for the advice of the council. We have the Lichee project that is in full effect. The construction is getting near completion on phase one. Phase one of that project is right at $1,615,000. Our bond attorney, David Riegelstein, was actually quite surprised that we had not gotten a construction law already for this. Generally speaking, he said that it's part of our letters of condition for us to get the grant and/or to get the law and it is standard operating procedure for any project above and beyond the half million dollar mark. It was under his advisement that we do this as quickly as possible. So, we really have two options at this point in time. We have two different banks that we could possibly do the construction law from. We have one here locally, First Southern State Bank and they had offered us a rate of 2.75%. Of course, that will only be paying the interest on the amount that we draw down from that loan. And there is a bank out of Colorado that had sent us some literature. It's called Cobank. It is a bank that specializes in projects to do with the USDA. It said that they, their specialty is water and sewer projects. They offered a construction loan at a percentage of 1.65. That's what they said their current rate is. Now, the question is, do we pay a little more, stay local? Or do we pay a little less and go out of state with it? And that's where I'd like some input from the council.
My input's stay local. It would be my vote.
Mayor?
You know, my position hasn't changed. I think we pay the invoices until we can't pay them or we're going to borrow the short-term money. You know, I understand that the conditions of the permanent financing requires a line of credit, but there's creative ways around doing that that would actually save us money in interest. We've paid a good portion out of pocket up to this point. If we borrow enough to finish, you know, phase one, then we got to the point where we're ready to close permanent financing. We can always bump that line of credit, have money flow over, we can bump the line of credit up to the point where we reimburse the city for all out-of-pocket expenses the week before we close our permanent financing.
Essentially, that's doing exactly what construction loans. You only take the money when you need it. So, you're not paying the interest on money that you have to borrow. They're just saying that you have X amount that you can borrow. So, it's at our discretion how much of that we draw down. And so, I mean, it's, we're saying the same thing, just in two different ways, the construction loan.
We're not saying the same thing because we're talking about spending more money on the interest expense. You know, we don't know, we don't know when permanent financing is going to be closed out.
We're not.
I don't know. Do y'all know? I mean, I've talked with Bill Prong, so he hasn't given me a day on permanent financing. It's when construction is completed.
The only money that we pay interest on is money that we would actually draw down. You take out the construction loan for the full amount and you just pull what you need.
I got that. What you're missing, though, what they want, what they want is a construction line of credit in the full amount, in the full amount of what you've constructed, what you've built, okay? And well, the way that permanent financing works is they come back and they'll pay you 80% of that, okay? So, our match is that 20% that we're stuck with on that line. We've saved interest expense by paying out-of-pocket these expenses up to the point.
I think the concern, what we got those, since the Weekly Post bill is about done, once we pay that off, we don't have left that's in pocket to pay that.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you brought that up. We had money in the bond, in the capital project fund to pay this last invoice until last week. And so, we paid Jimmy Traver $75,000 last week.
Well, we spent some of the bond money. We got it for specific items.
But I can't find authorization to cut that check for $75,000 out of that fund to pay the invoice.
We made authorization for the whole amount back when we signed the contract and done that.
Fair enough. So, what are we bickering over, this portion of the X credit?
No, there ain't no bickering. We're just, do we do the construction loan with Cobank or do we do it with the First Southern State Bank?
I say local, but I say local every time. My point is, the question is not that, it's paying this invoice out of pocket.
We paid it out of that bond money that we set up. We set that up a long time ago.
This invoice right here is outstanding, is it not?
Yes, and we'll have, we'll probably have.
We had money in the capital project fund until last week.
The capital project fund was supposed to have been like a line of credit, just like what was talking about a construction loan.
Sure.
Yeah. So, we pulled all the money out of all of our different accounts to pay this, which is saving us a little bit of interest, but.
But it's interest, don't interest.
Yeah, but it's stopping, I mean, it's stopping other things from going up, you know, to do something, so.
But we got an invoice from last week, and we're talking about the last council meeting. We were going to have a debt workshop. We haven't had that. I'm talking about an invoice dated March 30th, $75,000 even, that the city has paid, I found out today, that has brought that balance of that capital project fund, that was $76,000. And we don't have, I don't know who authorized that payment out of that account.
They just send those bills as they get, I mean, this project is finished, basically. I mean, it's pretty well basically finished.
Sure, so what's the point of running the bills to the meeting if we're paying?
The council, it was ran to the building. When we said that we.
You ran a bill for the council meeting?
No.
Last council meeting, the invoice is the date of March 30th?
We, when we awarded the contract to Jimmy Traylor, we said that at that point in time, that that construction renovations would be paid for out of the capital improvements bond. So, we did.
And it has been.
Well, that's where it was authorized to be paid.
We talked at the last meeting, we talked at the last meeting about paying this BX credit invoice out of that month. We talked about the balance being over $150,000, knowing good and well, we owe this $154 and change.
No, we said that, you brought it up, we said that there was money in there, but we also mentioned that we had other obligations with that money too.
And that was the obligation.
And that was what was coming down.
So, y'all saying y'all fine with the check last week, $75,000 to pay that invoice when it was never, the payment was never authorized?
It was authorized. It was authorized at the time that we accepted the contract with Jimmy Traylor.
I'm not buying that at all. If I had done that, y'all be jumping up and down.
The only problem we had is you, at one point, paid some of the sewer invoices out of the bond money that we already had delegated for the Weekly Post, but we got that situated.
I paid one.
When everybody came and we had the thing outside that talks about the sewer loan and the grant and everything, we asked you to look into a construction loan, stated law, we all went over it, you had no problem doing that. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't speak on that.
If you're talking about conversations dating back to the construction loan for the sewer project, I was all for a construction loan to float those costs until we get a general obligation bond of 1.5 million dollars, which y'all know good and well, I have a debt against, one for the terms and two for the timing. That changed the whole picture. So, who authorized paying that invoice last week?
I thought that's written in the papers.
Who authorized it? Where?
The bill came in and it was paid because it was already authorized months ago when we.
So, why do we run the bills to the meeting?
Oftentimes, we normally announce things.
And we look at.
And there's been under 750 just to show transparency that people know this is the project that's been done, this is the phase that's been completed, this is how much it's cost. I mean, we've talked openly about the bond issue, the money, what it's been delegated for, I mean, from, I don't know, a year ago, probably, with the Weekly Post and what the money was and how it separated. I'm not really sure or understanding where the issue is.
There was not clear authorization to pay that invoice. And I know how we handle in this term, I know how we've handled every invoice. They have been put on voucher and run through this meeting. And we vote, it's a standing item on every agenda of every meeting to pay every bill that's brought to this table. And that invoice was never brought to this table. That check's already been made out, it's already been cashed. I just want to know who authorized it.
When we have budget meetings and we have, and we have line items, this is my understanding, is when we have line items and there's budget meetings, that, when we pass the budget, it's not authorization to automatically pay that money unless we have, it's under $750 or we bring them in front of the council. We clearly passed contracts with Jimmy Traylor, you went over extensive numbers on what things were going to cost, if things were going to go over in certain areas, you brought it out, you talked about it. And at that time, it's already been authorized that way because we specifically authorized to pay Jimmy Traylor a certain amount for what to do. And the thing, just because the bills are split up in certain phases, I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, the majority of these bills followed in the budget. So, when you pass a budget, you're saying you don't, that's not a spending authorization? I don't think y'all can please. I just know, clearly that bill was not paid the way we paid every other bill.
I don't know that every invoice that's came through on that project came through the table before it went to be paid. I don't know that because we approved that. We approved that before and when those invoices come in, they're to be paid. And it would be the same thing in that BX credit. We've approved that and when the invoices come in, we've already approved that. The only problem with the BX credit is that we don't have a construction loan to pay that.
You're saying we're paying, we're paying the bills, we're paying the invoices that are not brought to this table and approved?
Well, they have been pre-approved when you, when you sign that contract. Yes, they have. Some amount, I'm sure.
There's not clear authorization to do that. I can't find any, y'all can't point any, you can point to the contract. But we reviewed with none of this whole term, we reviewed every bill and we ran through the table and we passed it. Down to $750, as much as that aggravates the fire that may.
I'll call the league and get clarity on that if, and we'll go back in four minutes and throw them out. I have no problem with it, I back it. And like I said, my vote is to stay local because it's not, so I'm ready to move.
Well, I'll be asking tonight that we move forward with a 1.6, $1,615,200 construction loan through First Southern State Bank with the caveat that it is to be fast-tracked. We need to have this signed in place and give it to our attorney. We can get this done by Wednesday, correct?
No. Not going along with it. I'm not.
And we'll bring it up for a vote and you can vote that in a minute.
Absolutely. We're proud of you.
How do we go about getting it fixed?
Getting what fixed? How did this invoice, when we got the nothing in the bank?
It's not just this invoice, it's the finished product.
Sure, sure. Which is in the ballpark of what, 300,000, 340,000?
Yeah, with this one right here, there's about $600,000 outstanding left on this project.
Well, our accountant walked in, Betty, do we, I'm sorry to put you in a place, but do we have the money right now as it stands not to get that construction loan and to pay everything from the general fund and cover it? With that, other things going late, you do have surplus in your general fund, possibly enough to cover it. Those, all I can say is the biggest part of that would be your same amount in electric, I guess, privilege, privilege tax that just came in. That's a part of the general fund, but.
There's no doubt we've got to borrow a short-term money to finish the construction, but we don't have to borrow 1.6 million dollars.
We're not borrowing it, we're getting a construction loan up to that amount.
Yeah, but it'll work just like that invoice that we paid last week, but there's no authorizations done without me knowing about it. That money will be drawn and spent and there'll be no accountability because apparently we're paying invoices that are not brought to this table and approved.
Everything has been brought to this table. There's definitely not, there's definitely not going through the consensus. There's definitely not, there's definitely not going through the consensus put in this council meeting that any one of us has done anything under the table, because everything has been discussed in council meetings, voted on, and approved.
I'm not, I'm not.
And we can go back and prove every single thing.
I just wanna know who approved the invoice last week.
The council, and we will gladly pull those minutes when we get.
Please do, because I don't know that you'll have minutes for an invoice dated three thirty of two thousand sixteen.
No, but we'll have an invoice, and minutes approving the entire total that we owe for Jimmy Taylor.
The question, how do you fix it? We borrow enough in a construction format and draw it as we needed, enough to finish the project. When we get construction complete and we're ready to close the permanent financing, we go back to the bank and say we need to bump this to one point six a week ahead of closing our, our permanent financing. Bump it up, reimburse this fund, and close the permanent financing a week later. There's how you do it.
I think I'd rather go with our attorneys for proof base.
Pretty good.
You know where I stand. Well, explain to me, because Joey, I've got the numbers, and why are we going ahead for the one point six now when we don't have to have that? That's my question. I mean, I know what we owe, and I have no problem borrowing it to get, because it's gonna be done, why are we gonna get that much part?
Well, you only have to pay interest on what you draw down on.
So you're saying they can put the figure of ten Z dollars, if there's such a thing, and if you just borrow three hundred thousand, you're gonna pay interest on three hundred thousand?
Yes. And it was under the advice of our bond attorney, David Riegelstein, he said it's just standard operating procedure. You get a construction loan equal to the amount of the project, draw down it, down on it as you need. Once the USDA loan comes in, he has it automatically pay that loan off. Uh, and then the, the rest of that money, if there's, if, if we'll only borrow six hundred thousand dollars out of it. The rest of that money, they return to the city, uh, from that, that loan, the USDA loan. And then we would use that to reimburse the internal funds that we've already owed, because we do owe some internal funds.
The paving, we, we've expanded all the money that we were gonna.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm aware of that, but that's just from getting it, I don't understand why I put the number if you're only gonna borrow so much, I mean.
Friends, and I, I don't, maybe this is the wrong way to look at it, but I look at it like when I built my house. I had to get a construction loan, and you're approved for so much, we're approved for one point six million, if the way I understand it, doesn't mean I'm gonna borrow that much money to build my house, but however much money I borrow is what I end up paying, having to finance to pay. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
That's how I look at it, but I don't know if that's the right way to look at it.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking, because I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's not like we're borrowing and paying interest on one point six million dollars. Uh, and we will never even come close to, to that there. And so, a, and, on the off chance that we did, and which we won't, you, you're still not looking, you're looking, what'll be the total interest on a year of that, one point six five?
Well, we don't even have to entertain that idea, because we'll get our loan grant before then.
Listen, that's just my figures, I don't understand the number, what's that on the top?
Well, I didn't either, and then we got advice from our attorney, who does this all the time, that's why we have our. This is normal procedure. We can't trust our attorneys, again, we can't trust anybody.
Um, well, I did not mean for this to take up this much of time in the workshop. Uh, I, I think that's all that I have for this evening.
Call the meeting board, Graham?
Present.
Hope?
Here.
Ledbetter?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Lingerfeld?
Here.
Everybody look over the news.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented by the clerk in dispense with the reading there.
Motion by Graham, dispense with the reading of minutes, and approve as presented second by Ledbetter, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion that we empower the mayor to take out a construction loan with First Southern State Bank, um, one million six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, with the closing date to be, I don't know, what's the earliest we can make the closing date?
I think the closing date is.
Okay, today's the, the closing date of April the sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote no. Motion carries.
I make a motion that we, um, contract V I S Incorporated, uh, for cleaning out the influent wet wells at the headworks at the price of six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Second. Motion by Graham, second by Hope, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we authorize the payment of up to fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars to Jim House and Associates for the, uh, change out of the rotator assemblies at the headquarters.
Second. Motion by Graham, second by Hope, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have?
I don't have anything.
Um, this is not on the agenda, but Kelly handed this to me, and we are, um, on a deadline for this to, um, appoint the voting delegates, and this is in the league's business session, uh, when we go to conference. And so, I'm gonna make a motion, um, that Joey is the voting delegate, with me being the alternative, and David being the second alternative.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I was just gonna make a lie, and I was gonna get some people's opinion on this too. We've got the farmer's market set to open June the twenty-third, and we're gonna keep it in the park. But I'd like to sit down and talk with the chamber, because we've got some stuff that's a little bit different as far as, we used Tammy a lot last year, since we're not using the debt services that we was for court, she don't have the, basically, the free time that she did. And I wanted to try to get with the chamber to see if I might could get some volunteers from that, because the fees are the same, we're doing, it's like two dollars from DeKalb County, three dollars from any other county that's set up, but the way my work schedule is, sometimes I can't be there at three o'clock. So, I mean, I can be late and be invited all of them, but I'm gonna have to check, see if I can get with the chamber to get some volunteers to help out. And that's all I have.
Uh, no, let's see, let me start off here. Uh, the annex is almost finished, and I'll just go back into that. The annex is almost finished, and we had to have the gas turned on so the plumbers could, uh, to, uh, to do the, check out the water heater. So, I'll make a motion that we, uh, have that gas turned on, and it will be DC gas, that's where it'll be with it. That's where most of our other, uh, buildings is hooked to DC gas, so, if it's the same thing.
I second that.
Okay, second. Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next thing is, uh, the contract with Jimmy Taylor didn't cover, uh, a couple of porches on this end of the building, and then a access hole up into the top of the building to get to the heating and air units. Um, he said he would, uh, this is an amendment to the original, uh, contract, and for five thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents, he will build those two porches, two, four-foot wide, about eight-foot porches on this end of the building, over the doors, uh, put an access hole on the far end, up into the attic, uh, to be able to get to the servicing of the units. Right now, you have to go, if you're gonna service those units, you have to take the ceiling tiles out, climb up through a ladder, you don't probably even climb off of it, and so, which is really not a good way to do it.
This access door.
It's a, it's a hazard for somebody to hurt, or at least turn it down the ceiling, so, that's not a good way to do it.
Uh, the access door also be built wide enough to where if a unit has to be replaced, that you can actually get the heating and air unit out that access door and do one into it, so. That's the reason for the, uh, the width.
Yeah. Uh, they, there's some vinyl that was damaged around the building, and that covers the, that, uh, the damage of the vinyl and some holes and debris that was from something. I don't know if it's from tornado damage or what, but anyway, I'll make a motion that we accept this.
I second it.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
When I got the, the bid of the day, uh, that bid and to do a few things, it was, uh, the two added up to about twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, that one's five thousand, and to do our parking lot down there to fix the drainage and, and pave the whole parking lot is gonna run around, uh, we got one bid for ten thousand and one bid for twelve thousand, and that's to do the dirt work, take all the asphalt out, bring the dirt work down to right grade, pack it, and then put asphalt back in. And so, I put that in the form of a motion to go ahead and get that part done. Uh, Ricky Dawkins has been working with some people on that to, to do this, so.
I suppose we're asking, now we talked about using the city worker, you cut that out, and then sort of.
That's, that's part of, it, it'll save, I'll put ten thousand, save about fifty-nine hundred if we can cut it and do it, do that part of it, so, so.
I, I'll second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, had one more item pertaining to that building out there. And, uh, it's got a, it, the roof is getting, looking a little bit old, and was thinking about if we could, uh, put the metal roof on like the rest of the municipal buildings have, and make it look a little bit better. And it's got one small leak back in one place, so, this is something I'm bringing up, it's, it's, it's between nine and ten thousand dollars to do this, but I'm just bringing it up, and it's, you know, throwing it out on the table floor. I'll make a motion, and y'all do what you want to on it.
I, I think it'd be beneficial, it'd be for the long-term preservation of the building, you put in a metal roof, and you don't have to worry about it for the next thirty years. It would also, uh, aesthetics purposes, it would have the same look and feel as the police station, city hall, and the, uh, pool building back there. They're all the same color and have the same roof.
And that's a, that was another variation of the, of the original contract if we wanted to do that, so.
I'll second this motion.
That's another variation.
Is that on this list, probably?
It's the second, third one down. He just gave it to me, and I, and he didn't give a spreadsheet for it, but it's on that list right there. No, not the third one down. Or for that.
Um, I'm not opposed to doing that, I would.
And you, and we can wait.
I would, I would like to wait a little bit.
Okay.
I, I, so I would, if we voted on it tonight, I would have to vote no.
Okay.
Uh, motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham.
Do you want to wait, or do you know the draw, or?
No, I, I, I'll tell you what I'll, since we, I've spent some money on it, so let's, you know, let's, uh, I'll withdraw my motion, because we're.
I, I, I'll withdraw my second.
Isn't that all I have? No, no. I got one more time. Uh, had a little bit of, I don't know, kind of confusion of what, but, uh, tornado shelter, the maintenance of the tornado shelter, and we've talked about this before, but, uh, I think it's, uh, right now, it's on the police. And, uh, they, they were shorthanded the other night, they needed some help. Uh, is that something that y'all think that the fire department could help us with, uh, help the police department with, or what y'all's thoughts on that? I'm just bringing it to you.
I, I, I think the primary responsibility should be on the fire department, and secondary on the, the police department. There, in the event of, uh, severe weather outbreaks, uh, I think it's beneficial to the citizens to have the, the police department actually patrolling the streets. Um, that way, if there's any obstructions in the streets or anything, they could be on the spot, uh, a lot quicker.
How's the police department work as far as, actually, we are the threats of the bad weather? Is that automatically people, is it sitting on standby waiting to be here, or?
No, well, all officers know, have the understanding of, you know, the bad weather is, we manage to call something, and of course, that creates overtime and, and stuff like that. The issue with the, the tornado shelter, if it's, obviously, if it's Monday through Friday during school hours, then the public has no access to it. That's the county, and if they all, uh, if it's after hours, um, if I'm not mistaken, Chief Senator's state supporter, if a tornado warning, warning was to cap enemy, then we unlock it. If a tornado watch was for our area, we would unlock it. Now, that being said, if it's for Geraldine, and it's showing that it's, it's tornado watch, and it's going below Geraldine or whatever, then we wait till it's a warning, you know? Um, and it simply because, the fire department's in the same situation we are, they have two, three people per shift.
Yeah.
You send one person over there, that person is there for the entire duration, regardless if it's fire or police. Um, you know, the police department, if they go over there, then you've got one officer to patrol the entire city during this time. Now, I know it sounds a lot worse than it is, um, a suggestion of mine would be having someone designated to come and sit at the tornado shelter. We'll still unlock it, we'll still have the key after hours and stuff, but once it's unlocked, and this designated person or persons for several, uh, show up, then we leave and go do our job. If there's an issue there, they have a radio, they can call us, we can come back and inform us of the issue.
Since you're the chief, you got anybody in mind?
Well, I mean, we can get with the M A, and see if the M A can send the volunteers up here, if we need to do somebody, there's a radio, somebody that can radio us, hey, I've got whatever.
And non, don't necessarily have to be non-ambulatory personnel, but personnel is not on the unit at a time.
Right.
Because we have such thin staffing for the police department, fire department anyway. We're tying one body to that situation, and in storm time, oh, there, there's probably gonna be it.
Right, when you need one somewhere else. And, and even saying that, there are some, some cities that will have a council member or council members designated. Okay, the police department goes and locks it, you know, and some or so shows up and make man it, you know, until whatever time is necessary to lock it. And if they have a problem, that probably, the police doesn't give them the problem, so.
I'm calling to her, I hear it.
Well, that is, that is something that, you know, is obviously up for discussion, and, you know, if y'all want to call somebody in, um, as far as overtime, we can have one of the persons working, the one who locks it and stay there until the person on call or whatever shows up. I would suggest either the M A or, or somebody like that, because it would be, it would be, at least helps the city.
Right. Well, we don't, we don't need, you know, police cars, we don't want them damaged either, but our fire, uh, trucks and equipment's a lot more expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I'd rather have those house, I mean, obviously, if they have to be out for emergency, they need to be out there. If it's not an emergency, I'd rather have a house in a building. It could be hail, or it could be a lot of things going on, and because we have such thin staffing, if one of our duties over there, then they don't have to take an engine truck or something, and they can respond to a cop from there.
Don't they have?
And I, I talked to Thomas about this, this was something me and him talked about, and that was some of the same things that he said, you know, but we, I just wanted to get a, a discussion, you know, of what, what we need to do.
The council say.
And if we can't get somebody to volunteer, if we can't get somebody to volunteer, if we got somebody who wants to come in, you know, and, you know, if we have to place somebody, I'd really have that and have one of our police cars sitting over there all the time, or a fire truck, you know, not me.
That's, that's gonna be the thing, because if you did have a fireman, they're not gonna drive from the station. Well, just the regular vehicle over there, and they'd have to leave there, go back to get a fire truck, and go over the car, so.
Well, they could drive one of their smaller vehicles over there, you know, to explore expedition or whatever, but then, if they get a call, then they gotta go back.
To get it.
Get it, so, it, it, you know, then you're, you're kinda acting up on that.
Because of the tornado shelter, somebody has, they've been there all time, so that they can train dogs, guns, or something, so, when Anthony said that they did that, there's got to be someone there at all times.
Yes, that's right.
So, I mean, you can't have somebody like that and then run off and run away.
Yeah.
You've gotta have somebody to police it, but it don't have to be a police officer.
I think it has to be somebody authoritative.
It, it may be.
I, I, I think.
Well, other towns, when we, when with M A, they have people specifically that go and open, Valley Head has somebody, because when we do. Valley Head has somebody, because when we do the, the, uh, the conference calls, there's people coming in that they're designated to do, that's their job, to go open the tornado shelters.
I can tell you.
And I wouldn't care to approve to pay somebody to come in, I'd rather have that pause and us not talk about it over time when it comes to making sure that that's open for our citizens.
And I'm sure you guys are, but fortunately, right now, we're not in a position to work, you know, y'all can discuss it, y'all can let me know how to handle it, and I'll take care of it, so.
That's, that's why I would have volunteered.
And, and like you're saying, though, to beat the dead wars, either the fire department or the police department, when you send somebody over there without bringing someone else in, you know, I mean, you're, you're cutting your, your portion down to half, you know, it's just the speaking partners.
Um, speaking of being short-staffed, are you ready to post your job opening yet?
Post.
Matthew Franz, just a question. What's the status on that?
Well, that's another thing that I wanted to talk about to see how that process works, because there's a lot of processes that I might not know exactly how it works. Uh, and, and yes, I'm, I'm ready to ask for a lot of stuff, so.
Ask away, Johnny, we're ready to give you anything you want.
Or piss us, or take it rough. On a serious note, yes, I, I do get your place in, and I'm, I'm in, I'll go through the process, and since you brought it up, I'll throw that in.
Just voting to post the job internally in the end?
Me too, two officers, um, and then.
Both full-time?
Yes, and vehicles, because we're down, I didn't realize this, but, um, we, we don't have a spare vehicle, we got every officer has a vehicle, so there's a lot of avenues we can approach with this.
That's probably, like, I think on Wednesday. In that, are you still doing department head papers on Wednesday?
No.
You're not doing it anymore? Nevermind, I did.
I hope we can talk Wednesday.
I mean, I can bring up posting of the job tonight, because I had asked, when he put in his resignation, if we were gonna, but you weren't back yet, so. If, I can bring it up right now, and so we can get the ball rolling, because we're about to hit one hundred.
Well.
And plus, I'd rather have more cops on the road and get this ball rolling.
I would ask you to.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would appreciate it since you're.
Well, I make a motion to post internally first according to our job resolution. Um, two police officers starting pay at the bottom of the, the starting rate at the pay scale. Starting tomorrow.
You're voting to post it.
Should I do it Wednesday, start it Wednesday so we can get it together? Let's, let's do it Wednesday, April sixth, to post it.
You're voting to post it, I'll second it.
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any further?
Um, as far as the, um, the vehicles go, I was just looking at our desk, did we make a payment maybe in twenty fifteen? Sorry to put you on the spot, but the twenty thousand dollars to the three chargers?
September.
Okay, so we only owe twenty thousand left on that note?
Uh, we still have two months to go.
Oh, okay. So we owe forty thousand currently. Okay. And we'll pay it this year, and we'll pay it next year?
That's correct.
The, uh, the costs, we, we got the three chargers for sixty thousand dollars, basically twenty thousand dollars a piece. And, um, we, and part of our fleet renewal is, um, is paying that off, and, and we need to figure out how we can get another vehicle. We may have to look at a, a not a new vehicle for the time being until we get this retired.
We're gonna sell it a lot soon.
Are there motions to pay the monthly bills?
I have motion to pay the bills.
I second it.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion in there?
I'm making a motion, Roger.
I second.
Motion by Freeman, a good time to meet, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.